...pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item is the meeting minutes. If you've got any questions, concerns, or may have a motion. Want to read it?
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve executive minutes for the meeting on January 27th, 2014.
So, I'll move. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye. And we have financial questions?
Hey, how are you?
Are we speaking into the mic? Turn on the microphone. The first minister.
The financials today include a revenue certification for the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Assistant Fund for anticipated state funding, appropriation transfer from the contingency account to put appropriations in place for this 2015 Sepulveda Wellness Grant, supplemental appropriations to distribute the carryover balance in the general fund, including incorporation for the auditor's office, the clerk of courts, ADP, public defender, and veterans' office, as well as the contingency and transfers out account. Cap transfer to the general fund for 2015 funding for the tax net, for the auditor's and engineer's office, as well as stormwater and engineer's office funding in accordance with ORC 315.11, and a portion of 2015 funding for the county home. Purchase order for Bergren Associates Incorporated for the purchase of 16 mission alarm systems and service agreements for the Department of Water Resources sewer plants in the amount of $34,089.60. Travel request for the engineer's office and the transit department. Payment to Lobos Communications for the annual Cisco Smart Maintenance Contract for the ADP Board in the amount of $80,718.50. And payment number six to EnviroCom Construction for contracts A and B for the Thompson Wastewater Treatment Plant Project for the Department of Water Resources totaling $588,682.29.
Any discussion? Doc, can you get a motion?
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve an executive resolution number 15-013, itemizing the financials for the meeting of February 3rd, 2015.
I move. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Thank you, boy. Do people hear that, Mike? Is that speaker working back there? No?
Because there's sound coming out of it.
I didn't know if it's worth the...
Yeah, I think it needs to be closer to... When I was practicing with it, you had to hold it up. When I was saying earlier...
I know it's worth the effort. We need to probably look and get in some rules. Okay, Department of Aging.
Yes.
You're...
Good morning.
You're a practiced performer.
Yes, pick up the microphone. Speak right.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, does this work? All right. Okay, good morning. The first thing I had is I have one of my long-term employees, Mary Ann Deach. She's been with us a little over 18 years. She is eligible to retire, so I included her retirement resignation. That's number three from the agenda. She's our home-delivered meals coordinator.
Any final challenges, questions?
The Department on Aging is requesting the board accept the retirement resignation of Mary Ann Deach, home-delivered meals coordinator, number 1010, to be effective May 8th, 2015.
So, move. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
Okay. The Workforce Investment Act Youth Services Agreement with Catholic Charities. This is something that we had in place for last summer. Typically, the Department on Aging has been a work site for Catholic charities in the summer months, where they have a program that teaches life skills to youths with maybe some social issues, behavioral issues, emotional issues. These youths are under constant supervision in the summer months, and they are a large part of our cleanup programs through our tour and home safety. Something that they approached me with is instead of just doing the summer month, to do a year-round program that will continue the summer program that we have with the group of youth that are under constant supervision, but now also include youths placed with us throughout the course of the year, one at a time, to work on their life skills, job skills, so that they will have success finding an employment. This is a life skills program and not necessarily an income-based program. So, this is basically changing the agreement that we had in place that we just covered, I believe, June through August to year-round.
Any questions? Doc, can you read it?
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the work site agreement pursuant to the Workforce Investment Act Youth Services and Training Employment Subgrant between Catholic Charities Corporation, doing business as Catholic Charities Diocese of Cleveland, and the Jock County Board Commissioners for the Department on Aging to provide work experience to youth participating in the program for the period December 1st, 2014 through December 1st, 2015, and will be funded through Catholic Charities Community Services.
So, move. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
Okay, next on the list is I'm pleased to say that we now have a lobby at the Department on Aging at the front desk, so that we have eyes on people coming into the building, and it also helps new visitors. We can direct them where they need to go. It also helps us know who's coming in the building, in case perhaps someone does not belong in the building. It helps us keep a handle on that. In putting an office there, we did have the need to invest in another coffee scanner, so we did go with the best proposal through M.T. Business. So, this is the service agreement for the coffee machine that we look to get.
So, you now have a locked door?
We have someone monitoring an automatic door.
An auto... Right. I mean, okay.
It's handicap accessible.
Right.
The other doors to the building are unlocked, except for the front door, with the exception of 15 minutes prior to certain scheduled activities, and they are monitored by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
This is the contract for M.T. Business. We have to initial all of these spots.
Okay. Thank you for that. Jessica, between you and the water...
I have an exceptional prosecutor who goes over all of the...
Between you and the water department.
...cross about anything that she doesn't like.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute an initial DMT Business Technologies Incorporated VIP maintenance protection for Captain RC 4503 for the period February 3rd, 2015 through February 3rd, 2016.
So, move. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
And next on the list is I came before you, 11/13/2014, for a request for proposal for a West Geoga Senior Center presented with a legal notice of what we were looking for. At that time, we did put the request for proposal out in the Maple Leaf, and it was on the county website. We did get two responses to this request for proposal. Both responses met the bid specs and requirements. The best bid, however, was Patterson's, and what we did do after touring both facilities, we determined that the Patterson Fruit Farm was the best location. However, in lieu of going for a 24-month lease, which was the original intention, after the advisory board tours, as well as the county administrator, we did have a discussion about really the amenities and what we are really looking for in the senior center on that side of town, because it does service almost as many seniors as our Sharton site. I mean, we're talking a couple hundred off. I mean, there's a huge population that goes to West Geoga. And I think that as far as long-term planning goes, we need to start looking at a bigger picture as opposed to a one-year and a two-year and a one-year and a two-year, when we have so much growth. And please understand that the senior centers, it's not a social club. It's not coffee and cookies. There's dietary. There's health. There's screenings. There's legal appointments. There's Medicare. You know, there's so many other services that we offer at these sites. So, after talking with Patterson's, I would like to do a one-year lease again and then look at a bigger picture, because in our tours and in the conversations I had with some other businesses who did not bid, there really isn't a turnkey place that appears to be what we need. So, I think we need to take a little deeper.
What's the date on that?
The date on what? I'm sorry.
On the lease, the start date and end date.
It would be February 1st. It would be retroactive to February 1st. Our previous lease did expire the 31st.
Okay.
So, it would be retroactive to February 1st and end January 31st.
Okay. Thank you.
We do have the option, however, to go month-to-month after the lease does end at a higher rate.
And just as an FYI, Jessica and I had quite a bit of conversation about this prior to... I had a little concern that the public notice was not broad enough. Maybe we need to do a little better job with that and that kind of stuff. And we also need to take a little further look, which she was planning on doing anyway, at the long-term planning, addressing a lot of the issues that she just talked about in terms of, you know, the local need versus the county need. Ralph has talked a number of times about the growth in the aging population in Jock County. We really need to take a broader look at what we're doing, how we're doing, and to make sure we're doing the right things on a long-term basis. So, we talked about all that, kind of discussed the best short-term answer. It gives a year to sort some of that out, continuing forward with this. But over this next year, we're... There's a plan to actually look at the long term, and I would welcome the public to voice their... Give some input on that.
Sure, absolutely.
And so, by the way, while I've got the floor, I did... The commissioners each have the opportunity to put a person on the advisory committee. There's a gentleman by the name of Denver, Sally, who I'm going to be adding to the advisory committee for my... For a representative. And so, just to give you a heads-up on that, I'll get you his contact information. You can tell me how you want to...
He just sent me an email with his name and phone number. We'll go from there and get his information, so we can give him all the information that he needs, bylaws, meeting schedule, et cetera. And also, I will be sending an email out by the end of the week to all of you if there is someone who you would like to appoint to the advisory board, because we'll be meeting on the third Wednesday of this month at 1:00 as our reorganization meeting.
Any questions? If not, go ahead.
Diane Jones. Hi, Jessica. I'm glad to hear that there was that concern for the future, because I well remember the meeting exactly a year ago, the evening meeting, where there were a huge number of senior citizens who were very vocal about their concerns, and yet, on the other hand, it's clear to many of us that $2,500 plus part of the electrical utility is a huge chunk of change. And not being a real estate agent, I don't have a handle on that, but I would suspect under proper marketing and publication that you should get more interest in that particular venue, and there was plenty of retail space around. So, I continue to be interested in this subject, and I will monitor it. It's a huge expense.
Yeah, I would like to think about what's going to work five years from now or 10 years from now, as opposed to what's going to work right now. But as far as the price that we are paying...
What would the Metzenbaum have cost?
Pardon me?
What would the Metzenbaum...
We were looking at about $11 plus a square foot, and Patterson's is $674 a square foot. And, yeah. And we lease, and that does include the electric in it, the square foot. That's the estimate of the electrical cost. So, it's significantly lower, and I believe that the county leases to the education department. It's $10 and some odd cents an hour. So, the square footage is well below what it should be.
So, at the end of the month, with the outgo of $2,500 plus utility and the income, that's what you've indicated, there's income from use of the facilities, correct? So, at the end of the month, then, what is the net difference?
You know, I can't give you the month net difference, but I can tell you, we brought in about $12,500 last year through donations at West Geoga. I can tell you that much.
Okay, but donations are...
Donations are...
Yeah, that's not necessarily income.
So, what income are you looking for? Just...
No, we were... I think we were talking about the fact that the county gets income from renting the building across the street to the educational service center. So, she was saying that as a comparison.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
And we're getting more per square foot from them than we are being charged for Orchard Hills.
Okay. I apparently misunderstood, and I'm glad for the clarification.
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board accept a proposal from Patterson Farms for the lease space for the West Geoga Senior Center for a one-year lease in the amount of $2,500 per month, plus a portion of the building electric, as they represented the list and best proposal.
So, move. Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
Okay, we've got a public hearing at 9:30, and so, we're going to go to item number nine. Or, excuse me, 9:15. What did I say? 9:30? I'm late.
We're not there yet.
Okay. I'm just trying to rush, because I'm trying to get to the water department. It's so important.
Thank you. Ha-ha. Sorry, man.
Here we are, babe.
Could you use your mic, please?
Okay.
Everybody's interested in hearing what you have to say.
Oh, really? All right, here's our fair warning.
Hold on a second.
Oh, sorry.
We have to weigh the... If I have a motion, we weigh the...
Yeah.
So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye. Thank you, Kristy, for keeping us straight.
Okay, this is public hearing number one, and we got your permission a couple weeks ago to put the ad in the paper. So, this is any grants we could apply for this year. Doesn't mean we're blanking it. That means we have to have two public hearings for each grant we apply for. So, what we did is out of the grants that we could apply for, we picked the ones that might possibly we could apply for if we had a circumstance that commissioners felt was worthy. So, just to cover all our bases, we're going to have a public hearing on those possibilities. Well, the first one is a very strong possibility, and that's a formula allocation grant. That's the one that we're going to do this year for the Burton Region Hall, and the county homes, and Thompson. So, that's what we'll ask for again for this year, and it's an allocation we always get from the state. We'll probably get about $250,000 to fight that up between whatever project. So, we'll ask the townships to send in anything they have. Hopefully, mostly what they send in is things that make their buildings more accessible. But depending on the LMI, low to moderate income population, they can ask for other counties. But we would bring it specifically before the board, and you would have literature on it beforehand as well. The other one that you could possibly... We could possibly apply for is a critical infrastructure program. Again, that has to happen in a low to moderate income area, and you can fix repair water lines, sewer lines, do anything infrastructure-wise. Top's out at $300,000. The other one is water and sewer, which you're pretty familiar with as we're working through this. That top's at $600,000. The next one is economic development program. We used to use this a lot, but since our revolving loan fund, you know, revolves so well, we don't need to go to the state and ask for money. But should we have a project that we can't fulfill within the CDPG revolving loan program, we can write a grant to the state for up to $500,000 for a business. The money's granted to the county, but we make a loan to the business, and the business repays it. But you don't have to repay the state. The other is imminent threat. We've never used it, but a bridge collapses or a flood, tornado hits, and maybe you can get some funding to replace a critical building, or it's really iffy. Downtown revitalization, that has to happen in a low to moderate income area, and it is something that makes the downtown look more approachable. Onings, waste baskets, parking spaces.
Take that one off the list.
I got you. Neighborhood revitalization, that's sidewalks for a low to moderate income area, street lighting, park benches, recreation. Gotcha. Discretionary fund is sometimes, if you have a really good friend...
Be careful.
I know. You can have a project that doesn't fit anything, and if there's something special about it that is visible to the state, they might say, "Yeah, we know you... It doesn't qualify here, it doesn't qualify there," but it's something we don't normally see, and so, sort of like a pilot. All right. And that's some...
So, that $500,000 from the state, do we... Do they pay back the state, or do they pay us?
No, we get it. It stays in our revolving loan fund.
So, every year, we can basically up that $500,000?
Well, only if we have almost zero balance in the revolving loan fund. For the CDPG one, that's hard, because sometimes there's some oddities with how we have to environmental review, the... You don't want to use it for construction because it triggers prevailing wage. But if a lot of, you know, this year, we could possibly fall into it, with a couple projects might take us to the top on it. So, there is a possibility. But back when we were building the fund, we went there like three a year, we would get it from them.
Because they have to pay it back.
Nope.
The purchase, we don't...
The business...
Yeah, we don't pay it back to the state, but we loan the money to...
Yeah.
Over what period of time?
We probably, when we work... That's whatever the loan was for. Like, if it's a building, it's usually a 20-year AM. If it's equipment, it's five years. But that's how the loan got started. We probably had $2 million that helped from the state to get it started, but now the fund, we've probably lent out $17 million. So, it's regenerated from business.
Sure.
You know, it started with two, but it's...
We ever have any default?
Created itself. Oh, yeah.
We've had defaults, right?
Yeah, we're at about 3% default rate, which is good, but bad, you know, so...
Sure.
We get good, strong businesses.
So, let me use this opportunity to make a little bit of a point.
Okay.
If we get $500,000 from the state, that means the state has to collect it from each of you...
Yes.
...to give out to people throughout the state. So, your taxes go up, the $8 billion budget increase last year that was done by the State House and the State Senate. And so, all of this impacts of this kind of grant increases your taxes, and I'm just making that point to you. You know, this all sounds warm and fuzzy, and this is great.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to get money, we're going to give it out to businesses, because we're going to create business. Well, they could go to a bank to do that.
Well, they have to go to a bank. We can't be the sole lender.
Well, I know, I understand that, but, you know, government is part of the formula.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they can go to three banks. They could spread the loan around three different banks. And there is some incentive for, you know, coming to the government, because the government could loan it at a lower interest rate, yada, yada, yada. So, there's a lot of arguments for that. But I just want to make the point that using this opportunity, that whenever we do things like this kind of a grant, it impacts all of our taxes, and it puts government in control, and it's a real thing that I got an issue with. And so, for whatever that's worth.
Well, I will also say, it's probably one of the ways that when they were thinking, "Well, the government gives a little bit of money. Can they take it and run with it and make it feed off itself?" And it actually did. But, you know, I get your point. Understood.
Right, but I kind of disagree with what Skip's saying, in the sense that there's certain ability, I mean, where you guys are taking a second and third position on banks that those businesses could not otherwise qualify to get in their business. So, it's a big thing for us to, you know, it's not something that we're basically putting into, you know, bike trails that nobody's using today. It's a situation where we're putting it into businesses that are creating jobs and stimulating the economy, and those... Many of those businesses are not going to qualify under traditional lending at the bank to be able to get their initial loan, that it's a comfort level that the banks have to have to have your, you know, loan to debt ratios to bring it down. And when they're doing that, it's helping out, plus it's putting dollars into us for future projects down the road, too. So, I mean, I understand the whole, you know, but if there's one thing that, you know, people are paying their taxes for is to assist, you know, local commerce, I think that there's a certain amount of good for that, because it's a huge need, you know? And if we can do stuff in-house, I mean, you've got good businesses out there that can't qualify at the bank.
Yeah, it's great to have a local business to help them, and even more with the more franchises come in tomorrow, you can support local business. And it's hard now. I mean, for a bank to say, "Yeah, we'll do 90%," really doesn't happen anymore.
Of the grants that you talked about, this would be the one I would lean toward, rather than sidewalks and trees and yada, yada, yada.
That's all we need. We just need a foot.
But, I mean, this is a complicated topic that I don't want to take anybody's time.
No, you've got a big meeting.
We've got the water department, and I'm really excited about it.
I agree with Ralph that occasionally there are entities that need a leg up, and this seems like a worthwhile program to help local...
Yeah, maybe we'll be able to use it this year.
Businesses, you know, get a boost, and they theoretically hire local people, bring money into the community, into the county.
Pay taxes.
Pay taxes into the county, and so on and so forth, and...
Plus, we get... I mean, at the end of the day, through time, I mean, that $500 eventually will come back to us.
Yeah, they pay it back, and we pick it up.
Yeah, it's... Yeah, I think of all the programs, probably more successful than they ever imagined that would be. Our companies are so good about paying their... I mean, they're so good about it. They really feel they're obligated to, whereas in some communities, it's difficult for them to build their fund, because when you get something from the government, you don't think you have to pay it back.
Well, these people aren't going to put in all that effort with a blueprint to fail. I mean, they're putting in that effort hoping to succeed.
Yeah.
Doesn't always work out that way, but...
Like they'll sell their first child before they...
Right.
Their neighbors find out they didn't make a payment.
The reality is, 80% of all businesses fail, though, in the first five years.
Oh, yeah.
And so, we're putting people's... The public dollar at risk. Now, thank God that we have Anita, because Anita does a really good job at vetting potential businesses, and so, we do a pretty good job managing all that, managing the risk, and so on and so forth. But there is a relationship to the amount of dollars that come out of your pocket.
Sure.
And so, we don't... We want to know these things with the right understanding.
The questions, you should question everything.
And again, yeah, I think you do a good job in the revolving loan program here is a good one. It's produced good results and so forth.
Good people working.
All right. I move to closing.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, I guess we're closing the public hearing?
Yes, we have a final question. Oh, come on.
Oh, wait a minute.
We have a final question?
Go ahead.
Just a technical question. Nikki Miles, when those entities who receive the loans are paying back, they pay Geoga County?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a fund with the auditor.
Okay.
So, it all comes through.[1674.12] Yes.
Wait a minute.
Final questions?
Go ahead.
Just a technical question, um, Nikki Miles, when those entities who receive the loans are paying back, they pay Geoghan County?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a fund with the auditor.
Okay.
So, it all comes through.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
Sure.
So, we go back to...
Go back to...
Morning.
You got those runways cleared out?
Ah, I was supposed to go in. It looks like, it looks like we live in Alaska out there, I mean, there are big mountains of snow.
Well, the good thing is if somebody runs off into the runway, they probably hit this big puffy snow, right?
No piles, no piles of snow at the end of the runways, absolutely not.
Okay.
Yes, you know, there'd just be too much damage if something...
Uh, well, good morning. Today, I'm here for a couple of things. We have a couple of active grants that are going on, and one of them is a federal grant, um, where at this point, the poll that we are seeking the reimbursement from FAA is nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars, and that was the electrical portion of putting, uh, obstruction light on top of a tower that is near the airport. And I did go out, it's working, it only comes on at night, so I have to trip out and, and I will get it, but it is working, and that's the electrical portion of that grant.
Any discussion, comments, questions?
The Jack County Airport Authority is requesting the board acknowledge and approve reimbursement request number four for FAA grant project three three nine zero zero five four zero one seven two zero one four to install obstruction light and aeronautical survey in the amount of nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars, eight thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars FAA portion, and nine hundred and fifteen dollars county, local county match.
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
And the next thing that I have is the balance of an ODOT grant that we were able to receive for two thousand fourteen. We did manage to come in under budget on the grant, about seventy-five hundred dollars less than what our engineer had expected and was granted to us, so that will be, the grant will be modified to show seven thousand five hundred dollars less, saving everybody a little bit of money, but this is the final draw on this grant. The project is complete, and the final draw here is fifteen thousand five twenty-seven point eighty-five.
Questions, Congress?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yes. Was this a grant...
Could you please state your name? I'm sorry, I was supposed to ask that for the public record.
Diane Jones, Auburn Township. This particular grant from ODOT, um, is Noackla Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, uh, responsible for any of that action? No, this is strictly the, um, Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Aviation that runs the grant program. So, you deal directly with them? Exactly. Okay.
The Jack County Airport Authority is requesting the board acknowledge and approve reimbursement request number three for ODOT Department of Aviation two thousand fourteen Ohio Grant Program Project fourteen dash zero three to reconstruct taxiway and apron in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars eighty-five cents, thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars seven cents, ODOT portion, and one thousand five hundred two dollars seven and a cent, local county match, and five hundred dollars for engineering not covered by the grant.
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Patty, one question, uh, is there any update on the utility poles?
No, um, basically, what is happening now is this aeronautical survey that we're doing, all this debt is going to be collected, and, um, between our engineer, our board, and FAA, we will go through it with a fine-tooth comb and see if we can actually eliminate some of those from having to be done. If they don't quite fall into the category with height regulation, we may be able, it, it looks to me like we might be able to get rid of a couple of those poles that we don't, I mean, not have to remove a couple of those poles.
Okay.
So, that's the purpose of this aeronautical survey that FAA pays for, for us, is to make sure all of our, uh, runway area, our runway protection zone are all accounted for, we can see what trees are in the way now, we can see what poles are in the way now, instead of having to speculate, I say, this one looks like, you know, it, it really is going to help us. And so, we are hoping, um, there may only be in the end one or two poles that have to come down, and we're hoping to be able to negotiate a little bit better, but Prosecutor's Office is still looking at, once we know specifically which poles we have to do from this survey, we can then go back and make sure that all the regulations were followed at the time those poles were put in.
By, by the illuminating company.
By the illuminating company.
Yeah.
And then we will also go and, you know, seek a little bit of help from them, but so far, they've been...
I, I, I thought you had reported that it was going to cost them, like, a million dollars?
A million and fifty.
A million and fifty dollars, all right. And, uh, we had a CEI representative here, periodically he shows up, and anything you can do, or I can do for you, just let me know. So, I called him and said, hey, how about doing this? And he said, oh, I'll, I'll check in. Yeah, it's going to cost you a million dollars. All right.
Yeah, and, and what frustrated me was when they gave us the quote for the million and fifty dollars, um, basically, we were told, don't ask it to break it down because we're not going to break it down for you.
And there's some question whether or not they installed them illegally?
In the first place. I mean, you know, uh, there are a lot of regulations around an airport, um, there is actually some old, one of the things we're looking at is actually some old county zoning that went back when the airport was put into place, that, um, actually afforded us a thirty to one glide slope, which our regulation with FAA is a twenty to one glide slope. What that means is for every thirty yards you go out, you can go up a foot, every thirty feet you go out, you go up a foot. Our reg required is twenty and up a foot. So, it actually would, um, if it was put in and it didn't meet that thirty to one glide slope, there may be some action that we can take to get them to at least come down in the price. I mean, nobody wants to stick anybody with anything, you know, everyone wants to be fair on everything, but it just didn't seem like a fair price was given to us, and not giving us any explanation, you know, kind of ruffled my feathers a little.
Yeah, I, I keep up the good work, because it's, it's almost like they want to work with us if we pay the full bill.
Correct. Tell them, you know, we'll, we'll work it out and, and see what we got to do. Obviously, the, the most important thing is to keep the airport safe for everybody, and that's all we're looking for.
Thank you, thanks for being...
Yep, you're welcome. Thanks.
So, the county engineer?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. How are we?
Good.
Drive, wow. What we have here is just the second part of, um, the closure of a mortgage satisfaction for Canyon Lake subdivision twelve B. You've already agreed to do this, this is just signing and, uh, we're executing the release of the deed.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute a satisfaction of mortgage to release the mortgage deed for sub lot number twenty-six given by Canyon Manor Incorporated for Canyon Lake Colony Phase Twelve B in Waver Township as the maintenance period has been satisfied and all repairs have been completed.
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning, Andy.
Mr. Strachey.
Hey, Andy. We're splitting the tag here.
Good morning.
I'm going to warm you up first.
Good morning.
We're here on the, uh, few last steps of Stillwater. You're finishing up the few last steps of Stillwater dedication process that we've started. Don't, uh, if you're familiar or not with it, uh...
Yes.
Run through some details if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm good.
But, uh, any questions?
The only holdup was that, that company, the finance company, the bank, or somebody wasn't signing on.
Transporting the, uh, the flat to the bank for the mortgage release, mortgage release for the county, which has been taken.
Yeah, let's do that. We're going to read those together?
This is number eleven, and this is number twelve. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution of fifteen dash zero one four to order the dedication of an existing undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive TR one fifty-two in Russell Township. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute the final flat for the dedication of an undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive in Russell Township.
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Right here.
I'm just going to sign there.
Just the top card?
Yep.
What, is it unimpressive when you sign these big sheets like that? Be on record forever and ever? Forever and ever. But they're doing that, how many people have been down to the archives? You gotta go over the archives sometime. The, the history, just the smell of history down there, going back into the eighteen hundreds.
What does history smell like?
Really interesting.
It's musty.
What's that?
It's musty, and it smells like, you know, eighteen hundreds.
It is not musty.
Like me.
It is not musty, I'm just saying.
It smells like history. It's just so interesting to see all the...
This is the musty.
And Linda has done a great job, by the way she manages that, and she does a great job of, uh, keeping that straight down there, so.
Next up, number thirteen, is the annual resolution to authorize the county engineer to undertake projects using force account in certain cases for the year two thousand and fifteen, which is an annual thing that we request.
Explain force account, too.
Force account basically allows the county engineer to perform work through roads, culverts, or bridges underneath certain, uh, without, uh, doing the process of the R C. Typically, what we use it for is to replace a culvert with our own crews, own equipment, purchasing material. I don't want to go into super detail, but not necessarily...
My, my understanding on this, from the township perspective, is, uh, the, uh, folks that do contracting, businesses that do contracting for business, wanted some limit in there so that governmental entities like counties or townships wouldn't have a big staff to do a lot of this work, and logically, it shouldn't be bid out. So, they have to go through this documentation project to kind of establish the limit under which they're going to do certain work with county employees.
Correct. Let's do some of that work that the county engineer should take up.
Okay, good.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number fifteen dash zero one five authorizing the county engineer to undertake projects using force account in certain cases for the year two thousand and fifteen.
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you, Andy.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how's everybody?
Good.
How are you?
We're asking for the acknowledgement of some new staff. We have Andrea Winfield, who, um, is a social service worker two in a replacement position. She obtained her bachelor's degree in social work at Ohio University, um, and completed internships at Athens County Children's Services and our Kids Discovery Club at Good Works. Two, we have Ashley Gennery, who is also a social service worker two, and both of these are replacement positions. Um, she earned her bachelor's degree in criminology and her master's degree also in sociology, both from Ohio University. Um, she did some field experience at a correctional facility in Athens, um, and worked, uh, in an Appalachian Behavioral Health Center there. Uh, the third position is in, um, the IM Department, Brian Burke, as an eligibility referral specialist two, also a replacement position. Um, he worked for over seven years as an income maintenance, um, representing event in Ashbyla County, so we're glad to have his experience and kind of launch him over to our county. Um, prior to that, he served as a senior loan officer for some home mortgage lenders. The fourth, also in the, um, maintenance department, Angie Reed, or Angela Reed, um, as an eligibility referral specialist one. This is a new position. Um, we previously had temp filling this position for over a year, um, and that was actually at higher cost to the agency that the, the new position is. We had two veteran staff leave that department, so that availed some firm then, um, to cover as a full-time position, along with some system changes from the state, um, kind of implying that there's going to be some additional intake work in that department. Um, she came to us, um, with eleven years' experience from the Lake County YMCA's Perry Childcare Center, she was their executive director there. Um, and then the fifth position is Natalie Rencolli, and, um, in the agenda, had her listed as a social service worker two, but there's a correction to that, um, she's a social service worker one. Thanks. Um, also a replacement position, comes to us with her bachelor's arts degree in psychology from Penn State, and most recently, um, worked as the lead mental health specialist over Beechbrook, and also volunteered with the Women's.
Thank you. Thank you.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board to acknowledge the following new hire appointments of the Director of Job and Family Services as they have complied with the board commissioners recruitment and hiring procedures. Andrea Winfield, social services worker two, replacement effective December first, two thousand fourteen. Ashley Gennery, social services worker two, replacement effective December first, two thousand fourteen. Brian Burke, eligibility referral specialist two, replacement effective January twelfth, two thousand fifteen. Angela Reed, eligibility referral specialist one, new position effective January twelfth, two thousand fifteen. Natalie Rencolli, social services worker one, replacement effective January twentieth, two thousand fifteen.
So moved. Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hey.
Good morning, Craig.
Good.
I'm usually pretty loud, so I don't know how much I need this. Um, just we're, I'm here to, to just answer any questions. I know this has sort of been an ongoing discussion regarding our family services planning committee. Uh, submitted, um, six previous servers to this committee, including Mr. Lair, and six new individuals that I have sought out and gone after, uh, and I really think would be, uh, good to serve on this committee. It's again, an advisory, uh, board to us, and actually, a, a board that is in place to respond to the commissioners, um, to make sure that, you know, we're doing, you know, what we need to be doing out there and best serving the community. Um, so, just with respect to items number fifteen and sixteen, because they sort of go together, I would ask, and I also believe I've gotten, um, you know, as many resumes and also, um, the paperwork that they're supposed to sign, you know, fill out, um, and I know there's maybe a couple, I think with respect to Jessica Bolt, um, she's newer to this group of this commissioners, you know, the group as well, we have her, and Chester Miller, I had spoken with Commissioner Claypool, and also, he's been a longtime Amish, um, community representative, that's sort of been a liaison for JFS, and I know at least Commissioner Claypool's familiar with him. And I think it's, this is a new, sort of new thinking, um, but I think it's really important that we have an Amish, um, you know, community member representative on this board to make sure that, you know, because we do, you know, we're there also to serve them as well, I know, and really try to be a liaison, uh, to show that, you know, we're a friend to them and, you know, can, can serve them, you know, as best we need to be. So, I would just ask the commissioners to approve these, uh, appointments, and so, and we have our first meeting February twelfth, and, uh, so we can get moving and, uh, you know, do what we need to be doing.
Aye. Yeah, let me, before I do that, I just, uh, want to make a statement that I'm really pleased, Craig has been doing a really, uh, good thing, a good job, uh, in this position. I know he's kind of new and getting his, still getting his feet under him, but, uh, this is, recognizes, um, his appreciation for the Amish community and for some of the changes that need to be done on the board. We talked quite a bit yesterday about some other things and another dimension of job and family services, but, uh, I just wanted to recognize him for the effort that he's put out on that, so.
Thank you very much.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board reappoint Nan Burr, Sandy Berkman, Nancy Sealpock, Matt Gomelo, Christine Givens, and David Lair to the Family Services Planning Committee for a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board appoint Jared Tudor, Scott Hildbrand, Julie Wees, Vicki Clark, Jessica Bolt, and Chester Miller to the Family Services Planning Committee for a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make those more...
Second?
Commissioner Orey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sittler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Morning, man. Have your stuff around now.
How you doing?
Got our due diligence.
Morning.
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 You recall, back in January, that came before the board, and we made application for a technology grant through the Justice Assistance Grant, formerly the Byrne Memorial Grant process, and we have been awarded that grant, we qualified. Jeff is responsible for authoring the grants, writing them, monitoring, following, ensuring our compliance, et cetera, so it's much of a privilege to bring him up today and have him come before the board. This grant, it will, is going to be used to purchase mobile data terminals, computers in cars, as we work towards updating older computers, as we face obsolescence with those units. Previously, we have received awards for eight units, and Jeff was able to cut a better deal, and we are now at 10 with that, so this grant will put us at 17 of the units we need replaced. Some questions?
Where does this grant come from?
This is a Justice Assisted JAG grant, formerly the Burn Memorial Grant at one time. This would be federal funds, they're allocated back through a formula process, a grant process.
Through the Office of Criminal Justice Services in Columbus, that's passed through, federal money's come down through there, and it is distributed throughout the state through a grant. Are your requests for proposals you submit as a competitive process?
These units, these are the new or style replacement unit, right?
Correct. Update news.
New operating system. The old stuff was, but these are completely compatible with?
These that not only are...
The old ones too, right?
Yeah, but these allow us direct connectivity with certain databases, criminal history databases and things through the state that we need access to. They blend with our CAD system, our Stillman is the trade name of the report writing system that we use, and they comply with ADP's parameters as far as being able to join with the county system, access to various sites within that as well.
What's the lifespan of the unit like this?
The Panasics we were using now went into service 2007, 2008. They've now reached their useful limit because now, since they were a recognized unit, which means it was all compartmentalized, it also ran the Windows XP system, which the Attorney General's Office won't allow you to access their information now in XP systems, so we have to move up to another operating system, which also allowed our guys to be able to access that information through the OLEC website. A lot of them now can't get into that site because it's not supported by XP anymore.
If you could do me a favor, when we're done, you guys have the time, let's set up an appointment. I'd love to sit down and take a look at your asset management policies and stuff, just to get up to speed on that.
Happy to do that.
Okay, great.
The sheriff's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services subgrant award agreement, Grant 2014JGAO26468, for MDT replacement in the total amount of $24,596. $18,375.72 from Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, $6,125.24 from the County General Fund. This grant is for the Perry, January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay.
Morning.
Morning.
Yay.
All right, the first two items on the list are about the position and personality. The first one is for McFarland Wastewater Plant, which is a 24/7 shift there. We've currently been having a summer help, and then they've been going back and forth to being people help there. We don't have a need for somebody full-time, but a part-time person has been working up really great the last couple of years, especially now that we have two or three employees that have six weeks vacation, basically, when they can retire soon, and so there's a lot of fill-in time, especially when you run a tight shift there 24/7. One person calls off stick, it causes a major overtime issue problems, and with this part-time person that they're dealing with, the summer help helps out a lot. So what we're doing is granting, hiring a part-time person, full-time.
Instead of seasonal work.
For the seasonal, yeah. Yeah, part-time. Yeah, so they keep going back and forth every four or five months, every time, summer help for the seasonal fires.
Questions, comments? Can we leave the next two together?
Okay, the next one, the next one would be is for our water section, basically. In our budget, we had for a new person from the water section, when our supervisor retired four or five years ago, we had to replace that position because of the shift of people, move people around, so the water section has been in need now, for somebody else, so if somebody from the maintenance section, sir wants to come over to the water, we're going to do internal interviews, find out the best candidate internally, so then we'll have an opening in the source section there. So that would be hiring a brand-new entry person for the maintenance for the source section, once that person is transferred over to the water section.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of part-time maintenance worker number 2330-1 at the McFarland Wastewater Plant. This position will remain posted until filled. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of full-time maintenance worker number 2330-Lamira Road Garage. This position will remain posted until filled.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Now, let's typically, then, we've got a lot of motions coming up here, rather than do these all individually.
I'll tell us, quick, summary of them all.
Okay, good. How do we, why do we those, or do those?
We can do them in concert after he explains them, if he would like. I'm going to give you this tip, and if you want to, there's a couple at the bottom that he wants to talk about.
Okay, so go ahead.
Yeah, items 20 through 37 are kind of our standard service contracts that we put together at the beginning of every year. We use, wind up using probably about 50% or so of those contracts during the year, so that these are set up now so that when we do need them during the year for emergencies or, you know, situations where we don't have the equipment internally to use to dig up sewer lines or do proper landscaping or so, we can have those contract, those folks come in and give us a quote on that individual project, and we choose from the two or three quotes that we get from those. So these are just kind of setting them up so we don't have to go through the individual service contracts with them every time we need them along the year, during the year. 38 through, and 39 are, those are, those are specific contracts that are being set up to do, to actually do work, not just setting them up for the year, so these are service contracts to do the work. The first one, 38, is for deboard plumbing in heating company to do the backflow prevention testing for some of our systems, and then the 39 is the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, which is some work at our Merritt Road Garage.
Now, number 39, that was under the cap to bid out, or do you have an established contract with them, or what's the reason for using?
39 is, those would be, we went and got quotes from several different folks. The bid, having to bid out is $50,000, this is only worth $2,400, so we go, when we need something that's less than that, we go get two or three quotes and take the lower, lower of those. And then 39 and 40 are, actually, I'm sorry, 40 and 41, are service contracts with Gilmore Security for, to run our security systems, both at our plants and at some of our other facilities. Those ones are multi-year contracts, so those are the ones that we went and searched out for getting them to do multi-years, so we don't have to come back with that every year.
Questions, comments?
I'm sorry, hopefully I can do it. So all of those and all of these, we signed.
Just me or everybody?
Everybody. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Groundworks Construction LLC to perform excavating, landscaping, and building and maintenance services at various locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $20,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Bertrand Associates Incorporated to perform maintenance service and installation of all telemetry and control systems, including meter calibration at various water facilities for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Bertrand Associates Incorporated to perform maintenance service and installation of all telemetry and control systems, including meter calibration at various wastewater facilities for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $5,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Tim Frank Septic Tank Cleaning Company to perform emergency sledge hauling and vector services for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Bertrand Associates Incorporated to perform maintenance service and installation of all telemetry and control systems, including meter calibration at various wastewater facilities for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $5,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Tim Frank Septic Tank Cleaning Company to perform emergency sledge hauling and vector services for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Greenwell Weld Drilling Incorporated to perform well and well pump services as needed at various water facilities for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $5,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with tires, well drilling to perform well and well pump services as needed at various water facilities for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $5,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Ohio Plumbing Incorporated to perform emergency plumbing repairs as needed at various locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with CUE Excavating Contractors LLC to perform general excavating services as needed at various water locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with CUE Excavating Contractors LLC to perform general excavating services as needed at various wastewater locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Valo Tree Service to perform tree removal services at various locations, including after-storm damage for 2015 in an amount not to exceed $1,500. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Auburn Fence Corporation to perform fence repair, replacement, and installation as needed at various county buildings for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,500. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Deboard Plumbing and Heating Company Incorporated doing business as Benjamin Franklin Plumbing to perform emergency plumbing repairs as needed at various locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,500. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with the board's one-hour heating and air conditioning to perform HVAC services as needed at various locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,500. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Yarnell Tree Company to perform tree removal services as needed at various water treatment plants for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $1,500. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with McDonald's Equipment Company to perform generator services and repairs as needed in the water section for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $1,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Walley Door Sales and Service Incorporated to perform door repair services as needed at various locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Workman Industrial Services Incorporated to perform emergency rehabilitation and improvements as needed at various wastewater treatment tanks for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Emery Electric Incorporated to perform electrical repairs as needed at various locations for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Deboard Plumbing and Heating Company Incorporated doing business as Benjamin Franklin Plumbing to perform annual testing of backload prevention devices at the corner of Hullbrook, South Franklin Street and Shugren River Road, South Franklin Street, per requirements of the City of Cleveland for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $1,665. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Comfort Systems USA to perform services to maintain an HVAC system at the Merritt Road Garage, including spring, summer, fall, and winter inspections for the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $1,428. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board execute an initial a service contract agreement with Gilmore Security Systems Incorporated to perform maintenance services and installation of all fire and burglar alarm systems in the water section for a three-year period, years 2015 through 2017, in an amount not to exceed $7,500. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve, execute, and initial a service contract agreement with Gilmore Security Systems Incorporated to perform maintenance services and installation of all fire and burglar alarm systems in the wastewater section for a three-year period, years 2015 through 2017, in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Good job.
That needs less than that.
Can we have an applause?
In normal years, these wind up coming in piecemeal, somehow this year, they all just...
There's only one more.
Yeah, there's only one more, yeah, but that, normally, we do, you know, three or four per session, this year somehow, it just all worked out. The one thing we will be doing, looking at next year though, is going, going back and reviewing these based on the past years, who, which one of these we tend to use more often because they come in more, and try to get them to do multi-year contracts with us on those. We did kind of approach the subject with one or two this year, and they, they were kind of hesitant about doing multi-year based on they don't know what their costs are going to be and such, but we're going to go back and say, you know, we've done a lot of work with you, let's, let's try to see if we can work something out, at least to get a multi-year with maybe a reevaluation of the costs that, you know, in between years or so, so we'll wait. We won't be doing this every year.
Do I have a motion?
Well, Walter, any question?
Oh.
Okay, Walter?
I have a suggestion here that Doug and Jerry buy you all lunch after all the signatures and the readings that you just went through for our going through.
And I might point out, you see this big stack of papers here?
Yes.
Somebody had to ensure that every i was dotted and every t was crossed.
Oh, yeah, Christie.
And then we had the right place to sign coming into this whole thing, and, you know...
We know.
You go in bed at first, and then when it comes to me, I double check it before.
That's a statutory title of clerk, but it's a very unfortunate title because it really doesn't do justice to the kind of work and the level she works on.
You got that right.
And if we have to come back and sign this again, guess who's going to be on the back?
Christie?
Yes.
Well, signing these, not really able to follow the law. That's through 41?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner O'Leary?
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you, have one more.
You guys are over, you have overused your time today, I'm just going to point that out to you. You extended, you're welcome. Yeah.
You can keep these?
We're going to start charging an extra fee for time utilization, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
These are ours.
You're going to pay for time in the saddle, boys.
So, what now, next?
The next item is just rules and regulations for the department. We've kind of, over the last few years, we've been reviewing them and upgrading them. The last time they were actually updated was 1998, so we figured it was time for an official review and upgrade. Most of what we have included in there now is items that the department's been doing for numerous years through, you know, through our boards or, you know, just changes to our internal policies. We're just now just actually putting them into a document so that we have that. We have been reviewing, I guess that we've been reviewing for the last few years, everybody in the department's kind of had at least an opportunity to take a look at them and comment on them, and they're now including not only our rules and regulations, but in the back of it is our standards and specifications, which have been included with the department rules, but only by reference, so now they're actually part of, part of that. We have included, I've included in your packet there just kind of an outline of some of the sections that may, we may receive comments on, I don't know whether we will or not. These will be, we did send out a letter with the last bill, which went out last week, to all of our customers, notifying them that these rules are going to be up for comment for the next 30 days till March, till March 6th, and they'll be, there's actually a notice that's going to be published in the paper this Friday. Interesting to note is that there is no requirement under the Ohio Advice Code to publicly advertise these or let anybody know what we're creating them. They can literally just be created and signed off, but we feel it's important that we make sure our customers know what our rules and regulations are, and, you know, as well as anybody who would be working with and work with the department. So this is just presenting, presenting copies to you, they will be, there'll be a copy on our website, it was noted in the letter to the customers, as well as on the public notice, and we'll have a hard copy at our office for anybody who wishes to review.
And just to be clear, these are rules that we created, these are rules that are just a reinterpretation or a re-offering of Ohio Advice Code rules, what's the context on these?
Most of them are just rules for working with our, working within our department, dealing with the, our fee system, dealing with installation of service connections, any issues we might have with regards to inflow and infiltration into our, into our sewer system, pre-treatment requirements for any of our industrial customers who would, would be sending us sewage. for any of our industrial customers who would be sending us sewage that came in contact with their process rather than just the sewage from an office building with toilets and sinks, anything that they would, if they're great, like cheese, as an example, they use our water to clean their facilities, and then that gets flushed down, you know, into our sewer system. So, industrial customers like that. Some of it is clarification of what's in the Ohio Revised Code. Others is just more documentation of how we handle the things that aren't specifically, you know, specifically covered other than saying you can do this in the Ohio Revised Code and we're creating our rules on how we're dealing with it.
And so who devised these rules?
It was a combination of taking the original rules that were from 1998 and 1975 before that, I think, and looking at it, Doug, myself, and we had our, the rest of our, gave our other employees an opportunity to review.
So we checked to see if these, how these compare to other counties and so on and so forth?
Yes. We actually, Susan Wheeler with the Prosecutor's Office reviewed it, but we also took them and hired an attorney who was very fluent in the environmental laws. He reviewed those, reviewed those plans, gave us some comments. The one thing, he actually, this gentleman is Steve Hoyt. He does presentations at the County Sanitary Engineers, County Commissioners Associations on the environmental law updates every year. He did review them. One of the things I did note, let's see if I can find where I wrote that down, I thought that was pretty good. His comment was that these rules, these rules and regulations are among the most comprehensive that he has had the opportunity to review, and they've hit all of the most important issues.
And so from an approval standpoint, approvals are required on this. Are these informational to us?
These are informational to you right now. We'll be coming back, subject to any comments we might have that may push that back further. Our plan is to come back to you on March 15th to get a final actual approval for it.
Okay, but we do have approval authority over these?
Yes, yes.
But my question is with regards to number three under Reasons on the front page. Numerous customers, 395 in 2014, do not pay bills and amount is certified to property taxes. That's always troubled me. Why did they do that?
Under the Ohio Revised Code, our only choice is to, if we don't have any, if people don't pay their sewer bill, is to certify it to the taxes. So then we turn around, we certify whatever balances due to their taxes every, we end the date October, so we certify them the first week in November or so, and send them up to the audit office to be put on their property taxes. Why anybody would do that? Because, you know, there is a fee that's associated with that that increases their overall costs. I can't speak to any individual. My understanding is that it is not supposed to be deductible because it's a service, it's a service fee, it's not an actual tax, but whether anybody does that or not, I don't, I mean, I can't speak to anybody individually because I pay my bill.
Yeah, and it's not to break the bill down into smaller increments because they're getting billed monthly anyway, aren't they?
We bill every other month.
Every other, okay, so every, bimonthly or whatever, every two months, they get a bill, and if it's added to their property tax, they get to pay half of it, and then they get to pay another half of it.
Along with an additional fee that was added to it when it was certified.
I don't, someone has to sit me down and walk me through why that even happens. I can't figure that out.
Yeah, I don't know why anybody would do it that way. That's, you know, individuals' choices, but that's some of what we're looking for with making, putting these rules into place.
And that's all we do notice. I mean, they're given notice, and they're told, if you don't do this, we're going to do that.
Right.
And so this is all, follows a process, and, you know...
That's the individual's choices.
Other than sending the sheriff out and beating them up a little bit, then, you know, the choice to have.
And our only choice under the Ohio Revised Code is to certify whatever balances due, so...
Turn off their water?
That would be great, but a majority of our, a majority of our sewer customers don't have our water. They're on wells, and they only have sewer. There's only a handful, not a handful, but just...
Well, if you backed up their sewer, then...
Yeah, I was going to say, just make it so it doesn't flush, they'll pay their bill right away.
I mean, we do get, when it is certified, we, you know, when we review, we get about 96% of that back. The problem with that is, instead of getting it when the service was provided, it's, you know, a year or two later by the time it gets on the property taxes and gets paid through the property taxes and then paid back into our account.
That's one of the, one of the things we're changing here. Currently, we have a, at the certification time, it's 12%, so what we're adding in here is, we don't have a late fee, so once we're done here, every two months, whatever their balance due, they're going to be 6% late fee attached to it. So then at the end of the year, whatever is certified, then it's the 6% for the total. So we're sort of catching up throughout the year, getting our money ahead of time a lot of it. So that's one of the changes that we put on there for you. So currently, by our rules, we do 12% at the end of the year. What we'll be doing is about 6% every time their bill is due, and then a grand total of 64% at certification time.
So at the end of the year...
We'll be getting money sooner.
At the end of the year, when their property taxes are due, assuming they pay their property taxes, then you catch up.
That's correct.
And they just pay an extra 6% overhead and so forth.
Currently, they're paying just 12%.
I mean, it's foolishness, but what are you going to do? I mean, I won't even go there. I was going to make some comments probably.
I could see it on a rarity where somebody's got a hardship or something, and they're having a hard time making their bills, but doing it every year consistently is, somebody's gaining the system somehow.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the fun this morning, and... We'll be moving on.
Forty-three and forty-four, this updating payroll and accounting forms based on changes in personnel.
Any questions, comments we want to read?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve, authorize the President of the Board to execute the updated payroll authorization form for the Department of Aging, Archives, and Records Center Building Department, Commissioner's Office, Community and Economic Development, County Home, Department of Emergency Services, Dog Ward, Maintenance Department, and Transit Department. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the updated accounting forms authorization form for the Archives and Records Center, Commissioner's Office, and the Community and Economic Development.
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
I can explain number forty-five.
Initial ManCan Credit Services Form for Temporary Employment Personnel. Okay?
Fall of 2013, when this office was facing two maternity leaves simultaneously, we, I went out and contacted three temp agencies because I wanted to attempt to have someone to be here to help bridge those maternity leaves, and with signing up three temp agencies, we felt that gave us the best chance of finding a temp who would do a good job during the time we needed that person. Subsequently, now we've had a situation where one of our employees left for the engineer's office. Our front desk person, Debbie Ashburn, was promoted to that former person's position. So now we have a need to fill the gap of the front desk person, and we thought the most prudent way to do that financially, as we kind of sort out what our needs are long-term, would be to work with a temp agency again. Because some time has elapsed since the last time these agreements were done, one of the temp agencies was okay with providing these temps under the old agreement, the other two have asked for updated agreements. So, the one that's before the board today is for ManCan. It's the same terms as the last time. It's just updating the agreement to be constant or current so that they can provide, possibly provide us with temp employees.
Questions, comments?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute and initial the main hand credit into this form for the temporary employment of personnel.
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
Forty-six and forty-seven, I'm going to go together. Resolution.
Okay. Rita's?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number 15-016 honoring Girl Scout troop number 7143 for achieving the Silver Award, the second highest unearned Girl Scouting. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number 15-017 honoring Girl Scout Juliette Jessica Thunderhead for achieving the Silver Award, the second highest unearned Girl Scouting.
Make both motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye, and these are very significant. I know when I was in Boy Scouts, working your way through all of the various levels and so on and so forth, I never did get to Eagle Scout, unfortunately. There's a lot of work involved with that, so good, good job, girls.
I have an addition. If you want to do the addition before you do your executive session, it's while you're signed up.
Okay.
And that is to approve Judge Grindell's bond.
Okay.
It was reviewed by the prosecutor's office. I have a copy of it for each of you, if you'd like to pass that down. We're going to have a copy of it, they brought down this morning.
Now, I have two, I have two that I haven't got.
There's one for each of you. There's a...
Oh, for day two, okay.
I'm sorry, David. Has this been reviewed by legal?
Yes, it was sent to, it was brought to me yesterday, and it was scanned and sent to the Prosecutor's Office for their review. It was picked up yesterday afternoon, and then it was brought back down to me this morning.
Did they send a letter with it or anything? I mean, I don't know that, but this is the same company that he denied Skip an eye. Why is this any different?
What was attached to it this morning was a copy of the premium, a copy of the approval that you did on his continuation certificate that was done in November, a copy of the ORC, and then a second copy of another ORC where there's lines underlined. That was what was attached to the bond when it came down this morning. Kim, I don't know. You brought it to me this morning. Did they say anything else to you?
No, I didn't play a role in this. I really can't speak to it. My understanding was whatever was included in there should be able to answer your questions.
And I, and from my perspective, the issue that Judge Grindell had with our bond had to do with the titling on the bond and the way that that was corrected. I don't see any issues with this. I talked to...
Except that half of it's written in longhand.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a legal issue or whatever. Again, I don't have any particular issues with this bond. I think it's correct. We've got legal opinion on it, but it's correct, so...
Where's the legal opinion that says it's correct? Can I see that?
I don't have a written one.
We don't have that document.
I just have a verbal one from Laura yesterday, and she talked to the insurance company, and she, they did not have any problems with the writing in of the information on the bond.
We got a call for a vote.
I have a motion to the, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve a public official's bond for Timothy J. Grindell, Chagrin County Juvenile Probate Judge, in the amount of $5,000 pursuant to ORC 2151.02 and 2101.303, and further authorize the President of the Board to execute the approval form.
Motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Stand.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
They can start working on those, and then you can come back to them.
Today was complicated, wasn't it?
Not bad.
I know.
The Girl Scouts.
Yeah. Use the stand.
No, I will work on every one of them. We only do these every time that they're updated, so it's not...
I can sign into this.
The Board of Developmental Sustainability is requesting the board move into executive session for the purposes of reviewing negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye.
Who's going in with us?
Don Rice and Steve Tucker.
And we've got, do we want to do, because we're doing back-to-back executive sessions right now.
You can't. Do it again.
All right, thanks. They keep me straight. It's a good thing. All right.
Okay, so...
I can do this one from the back.
Okay. These are in at 10:27.
So we're ready to go back into executive session, aren't we?
Return.
We're ready to go back in.
Okay, go ahead.
No action to follow that, this first executive session.
Okay. And then, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing imminent litigation.
I'll move.
One question.
Go ahead.
Is this the same situation as last week? It's a continuation of the party from last week, Tuesday? Or this is a different situation? Can you address that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we can't talk about executive session.
No, 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 no. It was, it was just an informational question as to whether it was the same entity or a different entity.
I don't remember what the entity was.
Yeah, you got me.
But, I mean, just, just a second, set the record straight. We can talk about anything we want to outside of executive session. What we can't do is violate the law coming out of executive session. So if there's personnel issues discussed behind closed doors, we're not allowed to talk about that. But we can talk about anything we want to as an executive session individually. We go in there to have a private conversation, which we're allowed to do under Ohio Revised Code, but that doesn't prevent us from being, talking to the public. Check it out.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spudler.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye. Will there be any action taken on our return?
Possibly.
Our attorney, Tim Reed, will be joining us.
Okay, so we're now out of executive session. Do we need a, is there any specific pronouncement?
12:27.
12:27?
Okay.
The outcome of that, we had a conversation with our attorney, or an attorney, Tim Reed, to discuss imminent litigation regarding mental health board. We're continuing that conversation, and that's all we're going to say at this moment.
No action to be taken.
No action taken. So, and with that?
Do you want to cover me or not?
I have all these signed here. That's you. You have to sign all of this down. I'm missing an initial from Mr. Claypool and Commissioner Spudler on the top of that one page, and your initials on...
I can take care of those.
Initials, then. Go on now.
We can go ahead and make a motion to adjourn, right?
Yep.
So move. Second. Thank you.